All right, well, let's go ahead and get started. Welcome to the September 14th meeting of the Amherst zoning Subcommittee. I'll announce, as I always do at the beginning of the meeting, that all public meetings in Massachusetts are subject to recording, and this meeting is being recorded by Amherst Media for a later rebroadcast. First item on our agenda is announcements in minutes. We have two sets of minutes, the August 17th meeting and the September 7th meeting. Let's do August 17th first, any comments?
I move to approve.
I will second that, all in favor? It's a unanimous vote. Thank you, and thank you Bruce. September 7th, any comments? Seeing none, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Sorry. All in favor of approval, September 7th? It's a unanimous vote, thank you Rob. Okay, so, the main item on our agenda tonight, our intention was to dedicate this session entirely to the rezoning projects in North and South Amherst, and in particular, to turn our attention, for the first time really, to talking about what the details are on the map and where the boundaries should be located. To date, we've been working with a proposal from the Cecil Group, but we have not yet had any substantive discussion on where we think the boundaries should be. There are a couple documents on the back table, thank you Jonathan for putting that together. There's some very interesting and useful summaries of the properties up and down Montague Road there. Did you want to say anything about those Jonathan?
Simply to, that those were an attempt to, since I think that will be an area where there is concern about where the boundary lies, an attempt to explain some of the reasoning behind the proposed boundaries, the consultants' proposed boundaries. A combination of the precedent of historical use of various properties, the logic of location in terms of the division between what you would want to have as a mixed-use district and what you would want to have as a residential district, and what kind of buffering both location and future design and the design guidelines proposed in the Form-Based House Four. And even within those, there are some conflicts which need to be resolved.
Mm-hmm.
So it was mostly an attempt to set the stage for the discussion, rather than...
Okay, so, one of the questions that I have, just to make sure that we're all speaking the same language here, and none of the documents we're working with has street addresses on it, could you help me out Jonathan, by telling us the specific street addresses or any of them that you're aware of?
Okay.
Because we're always referring to properties by street address, but they're not on the maps.
We are starting, and I would actually encourage you to look at this map, the one that says Montague Road, proposed zoning at the top, which is an attempt to impose the proposed new boundaries on the aerial photograph, beginning at the river at the bottom, on the west, which is the left side of Montague Road. The first house there is 64 Montague, the second one is 72.
And I'll note that the property lines are the yellow boundaries on this map?
That's correct.
64 and 72, you said?
And the one just north of that is 82. Crossing over, across the street, the old Mill Building that is labeled in very hard-to-read red letters, Japman by the name of the owner, is 65. And the Garnier House to the north of that, immediately south of the entrance to Mill River, is 85 Montague. And if you go all the way up to the intersection of Coles Road and Montague Road, the house that is at the corner there is 134 Montague Road.
That's on the other side of the intersection?
It's on the west side.
Oh, on the south side?
Outside.
Okay. So, the boundaries as they currently are drawn show 72 and 64 on the west side, along with 65 and 85 on the east side, as being part of the North Amherst Village Center zoning district, along with the Coles property up at 134. And all the other properties, including number 82, are part of the new Form-Based Overlay District. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Thank you for that. All right, comments or discussion, thoughts? Rob?
Well, we've heard a lot of concern about some of those properties on the south side there, the south end of Montague Road.
There's a little bit of amplification from the loudspeaker, you're free to move up if you'd like to.
Is he speaking in the microphone?
Yes, he is speaking in the mic. They don't, the microphones do not give a lot of amplification unfortunately.
Yeah, thanks very much for that.
So, I'm concerned that if we concentrate too much on these properties, that will jeopardize the overall Village Center. And I'm not convinced that those properties need to be in the Village Center in order for the Village Center to work. So I'm going to propose an alternate zoning for those properties. But first, I want to, I just want to talk about why I'm not sure that those properties are necessary for the Village Center. The Village Center, as it exists now, there's business and there's residents. There's not a lot of service, except at Riverside Park, I think. So, what we, I think what we want for the Village Center to work is services and small business to grow up. But I don't think we should dilute the area where that kind of activity can take place too much. So, I would suggest that we try zoning the Village Center in a more limited way for now. I think it'll be easier to pass at town meeting. And then we can consider, in the future, inching up the Village Center boundaries along Montague Road as time goes on, as we find that it's successful. So, I'm going to suggest that rather than zoning the Garnier properties as NAVC, that we consider them RVC. Residents' Village Center is supposed to be a boundary between the Village Center and existing residential neighborhoods. I think that's a more appropriate zone for those. We should keep the Form Overlay on there, but let's gradually change that area.
So, if I understand, just to be clear, you're talking about zoning the properties on the west side of Montague Road, both the two that are currently in NAVC and the four that are partly in or partly out of RN with the RVF overlay, to an underlying Village Center residence, RVC, with that overlay on top? And that would be the same for the properties on the east as well, the two properties there?
Right, I think that whole corridor from the Mill River to Summer Street, that could all be RVC. Except for the Coles property that sticks out of the corner there.
So, just to clarify there, you are okay with NAVC for the Coles property at 134?
Yes.
Okay. And so you're proposing changing the underlying zoning from RN to RVC for basically everything south of that, down to the Mill River?
Right.
Both sides of the street?
Yes.
Basically, everything south of Summer Street and everything on the east, and everything south of 134 on the west? Bruce?
I would agree with that, because that makes the river then the dividing line, which seems like a logical, ecological place to have a separation. Oh, sorry, I was saying I agree with that, because it would make the river the dividing line then, between the different types of zoning, the Mill River.
Well, if I may, let me ask some questions and get responses to the part of the reasons that these properties, the 1-2-3-4 properties, had been included in the NAVC initially, was because of their relationship with the river, that the river, both their proximity to the core, the civic core, south of the river, and the potential for creating interesting mixed-use development in response to the presence of the river, that the river was itself was a kind of spur to that. Does that not make sense, or?
Rob, sorry.
That actually does make sense. But, the problem is that NAVC is a very broad, it's an expanded Village Center zone, it allows more uses than even NAVC, although not very many more. So I'm concerned that it opens up, you know, to too much resistance. RVC allows some small office-type uses. But the idea of opening up the river is very appealing, I agree.
So, I will point out that perhaps an alternate way of approaching this would be, I agree with much of what you said Rob, although I feel a little bit more strongly about trying to use the areas close to the river, that that's a really important part of the landscape to me, and maximizing the value we get from that is, to me, an important part of this. So, what I've been thinking of is the ways in which the proposed regulations that we have from the Cecil Group do draw some distinctions about what's allowed on Sunderland Road versus what's allowed on Montague Road. So another approach could be to look in more detail at that and maybe strengthen the protections that are in place along Montague Road in terms of the allowed uses, so that you could have properties close to the river there as part of NAVC, but not allowing the intensity of uses that would be allowed elsewhere in NAVC. That might work to also allay some of the concerns that people have about what could happen on those properties at the southern end of that residential strip. So I'm just throwing that out there as an alternate approach.
Could you give an example, maybe?
Sorry?
Could you give an example?
Sure, I'll have to find it.
There are currently limitations on, for instance, 100 feet back from Sunderland Road on both sides, on multifamily use, because the intent is to allow, in that portion of the NAVC, commercial uses to predominate along the street front. I believe, actually, that there is a similar provision along Montague Road, and I'll have to look at that. Let's take a look.
While you're doing that, there is another concern, though, and that's not just about intensity of use, but also traffic on Montague Road. So, one of the things that people want to do is not give people a reason to go on Montague Road.
Yes, the existing provision in the NAVC, that was, this is again the Cecil Group's proposal, for apartments, those are not allowed as a principal use, within 100 feet of Montague Road, and within the NAVC. They're not allowed at all in the other area, because apartments are not permitted in the RN district. I would note, by the way, that apartments are permitted under a special permit in the RVC district, so that we have a, there's a kind of a conflict that would need to be resolved there. But residential uses would be permitted within that 100 feet, as current, as the regulations are currently proposed, above the ground floor and in mixed-use buildings.
Sorry Jonathan, where are you reading from?
This is on...
Oh, this is 3.323?
3.323, this is the, one of the new standards and conditions proposed. No such provision, by the way, or prohibition is imposed on townhouses, because townhouses as a form are up and down, in terms of dwelling units, and they occupy less space. Apartments can sprawl out and cover a property, but townhouses are more compact. Yes, apartments, for instance, would be by, again, by special permit.
In both the NAVC and in RVC, under the change that Rob proposed?
Yes. With the exception, they would have to adjust the standard and condition to reflect. Townhouses are allowed by site plan review approval, in those areas.
Under the proposed NAVC zone?
Right, under the proposed NAVC. Oh, and, in the RVC district, as opposed to the RN district, Rob, one of the other differences is that mixed-use buildings, buildings containing dwelling units in combination with stores or other permitted business or commercial uses, are allowed under a special permit. So if that entire west side becomes RVC, then you're also dealing with the possibility that someone would propose a mixed-use structure there, or use, rather.
Yeah, I think that would be okay. Because it's special permit, and it's mixed-use, and there's a form overlay, it would be a more gradual change.
Yes.
And that might be appropriate.
Another question Jonathan, the Form Overlay District, the Overlay District, was not really designed specifically to apply to RN, but I'm not sure whether it was contemplated applying it to an RVC area. Do you see any conflicts or issues there?
I don't, because it's really about the response to that setting, whatever the zoning is. It is also applied, if you look at the map, it's also applied to the north side of Meadow Street, to both sides of Pine Street, for some distance out, and for, and to both sides of North Pleasant Street, proceeding south of the NAVC district there.
Is any of that currently zoned RVC?
Yes, the portions of, south, I believe, south are RVC.
Okay.
And some, in fact, some going both east and west are as well. So there's no inherent conflict. But, let me just try and reset this. Rather than having a district with an overlay on it that is strictly residential for all intensive purposes, except for home occupations and that kind of thing, on the west side, and perhaps that portion of the east side of Montague Road, what you're discussing is having RVC the entire length, except for the 134?
Yes.
Montague Road property. And on the east, I presume it would go up to, but no further than the Mill River entrance, that the remaining area would remain RN.
Yeah, that's, well, that's an open question, I guess.
That's why I asked it.
Yeah, either way, I think the RVC could go all the way up to Summer Street.
So, if we're going to explore that in more detail, we do need to talk about exactly where the boundaries would be. So, on the east side, or, sorry, looking at the west side first, the lower-left corner, the properties are sort of irregularly shaped there, and the boundary between NAVC, the eastern boundary of NAVC currently cuts through a couple of the property lines there and roughly parallels the road. My guess is that it would make more sense to kind of extend that line downward, rather than following the yellow property line boundaries, at whatever distance from the road, more or less, that northerly portion is. On the eastern portion, if your intent is to apply RVC all the way up to Summer Street, that would pretty naturally take in the two residential properties right above the Mill River entrance, there's sort of a flag-lotty kind of thing going on right above that. And then you've got a large property, that's a house at the southern corner of Summer Street, that also extends in the back there. You probably wouldn't want to take that whole property.
Might want to have the RVC boundary there match, or approximately match, where it's going to end up on the west side.
Mm-hmm.
That narrow corridor is actually part of the Mill River Recreation property.
That's all part of this.
Right. I would note that as you look at the boundary at the south end on the two properties that are immediately adjacent to the river on the west side, even though there's some very odd property lines there, they vary roughly, in terms of the Garnier Puffer properties, on the west edge, parallel where the very sharp drop-off in elevation is. There's almost a 12, 10 to 12-foot drop in elevation there. So there's a very natural division between what's facing Montague Road and what's facing Sunderland Road.
So that elevation difference is probably more pronounced on the northern section there than it is on the southern two properties?
It is.
It looks like from the map?
No, it's more pronounced on the southern two.
Oh, is it really, okay. So the buildings are in the elevated portion of that?
Correct. And that diagonal driveway is really the connector between the upper level and the lower level.
Sorry, which diagonal driveway?
Just, you see where NAVC, where it says NAVC?
Yep.
The N is partially on the driveway.
So then drawing a line, extending the existing line south, basically along that driveway, would be a reasonable way to do that, pretty close to where the driveway lies?
Sure. Or you could, it's sort of hard to see, you could just follow the property boundary. Come down, jog over, follow the strange sort of gerrymandering here, come down here and go directly south to the FPC.
And just cut off that last little triangular portion?
Yeah. Just make the connection directly to the...
Mm-hmm. All right, so, Rob and Bruce, you both already expressed support for this. I think, I think it's a good compromise in terms of bringing RVC, we have the existing zoning, has RVC south of the Village Center, extending it northward on Montague Road does seem to make sense to me, and taking those properties out of NAVC, I guess I could live with that. So, all right. So I know there's a bunch of people here who are probably not looking at the same drawings that we have, and have come in at various points in time. So, just to reiterate what's been discussed here tonight, we've been primarily talking about the properties, the... So on this map here, we're talking about the properties along the southern portion of Montague Road, and the proposal that Mr. Crowner made was to take basically these four properties here out of NAVC, and instead have them be RVC Village Center residents, along with the properties lining Montague Road, running up on the west side of Montague Road to the Coles property here, and running up the east side of Montague Road to Summer Street. So, this brown zoning here would come off of those properties, although it would remain on the Coles property up at the corner.
Who proposed this?
Rob Crowner.
May I ask something about the Coles property?
You may, I will just ask you to come up and use the mic at the front of the room, both for the people in the room and on TV, they can't hear you either, unless you use the mics. Thank you, and if you could introduce yourself as well, please.
Okay. I'm Paula Di Stefano, I live at 115 Montague Road, and I'm just wondering about the Coles property. I know that that whole clump of land belongs to them, and I know that the farmhouse is their old farmhouse, that they've been just leaving there and using the driveway area and the barns as parking for their vehicles, but I guess, I've seen some maps that make it look like that was residential too, and it has been sort of residential, residential slash offices. And I'm wondering why that's in the same ballpark as all the area that they're hoping to develop in the center there.
So, well, there's a couple things going on. One is that there's no property line there, it's all part of the same property.
Right.
So that's one aspect. But the other, probably more important one, is that there's a long history on that property, going back hundreds of years, of a combination of residential and other uses happening on that property.
Right.
And it's closely tied to, obviously, the rest of the parcel that lies along Coles Road to the west of there.
Right.
So, it's made sense to most of the people that have looked at this, that that would be a reasonable, it would be reasonable to extend that Village Center zoning out to Montague Road on that one parcel.
Yeah, I understand that, but because that's a big chunk of property, and because it's sort of facing two properties on Montague Road, and because so many people have talked about keeping Montague Road residential, I'm just wondering if there would be some kind of control over what gets built on that huge piece of property right across from the houses.
Sure, well, so there's quite a bit of control under the proposed zoning, so one of the things that we've been discussing here tonight is the fact that the proposed zoning contains quite a bit, or contains some language that specifically restricts and controls what happens along Montague Road in a way that's different than the rest of the zoning district.
Well, I need to read your, it's a big lung of paper, isn't it?
Oh, it is big and long.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but, one of the things that Mr. Tucker was mentioning earlier, was the fact that, so apartments in particular, which is pretty much the most intense residential use that you can have?
Yes.
Are restricted from being within 100 feet of the road, along Montague Road. So you couldn't have apartments within 100 feet of the road in that portion of the property.
Uh-huh.
In addition to that, and I know it's not a factor when you're considering zoning, but it is a factor in terms of looking at what's actually going to happen on that property. We've been told that there's a long history on that property of that farmhouse, and I have a hard time imagining anybody coming in and knocking down the farmhouse.
No, I know, but that's one of those shady areas where, you know, if it gets approved for business, they could, if they wanted to.
Yes, absolutely.
And so that's kind of alarming.
Yep.
But, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Tucker?
One of the things to note about Montague Road in general, and frankly, the way that these Form-Based regulations work...
Hilda, we need to hear each other as well, so, thank you.
Is it's not just the zone you're looking at. And in some ways, the graphics don't tell you everything that's happening, you have to understand how the graphics and the bylaw, the proposed bylaw, interact. Montague Road is proposed, for instance, to be a village residential street type, which is very different in terms of, and if you look in the, we've got some more copies back here, if you look in the section of the regulations, there's in fact an illustration of what that looks like. And it's not the same as a business corridor or anything else, it's designed differently. So the streets, you start with the streetscape being substantially different. Next, in that area, there are different building types. And in the North Amherst Village Center District, the village has been typified by this, you know, big house, little house, back house, barn... by this, you know, big house, little house, back house, barn form, and that's specified as the generalized form that would be used. So you're not talking about monolithic masonry buildings. You're talking about buildings of whatever materials that look like the buildings that are there now. And that's, I mean, you, you took the existing form and said, that's what it's going to look like afterwards, even if there are new buildings. So it's, there are these sort of layers. There are the street types, there are the building types, there are the regulations that govern how the landscape can be developed. There are regulations that deal with parking, that encourage shared parking and reduce, to the extent that it makes any sense, the amount of parking that would be required. You really sort of need to look at the details of the bylaw. The map doesn't tell you the story. The map just creates scary areas with color on it. Each, each area is regulated by layers of different kinds of regulation that address not only the uses, which is also in there, which I'm going to encourage them after we get done talking about maps to, to talk about next, but also all of these other layers. So it's, it's not, there's no free-fire zone here anywhere. There's practically, every time someone wants to do something, they get guided in a direction. And that's one of the advantages of, of form-based zoning over the zoning we have now. And one of the things that we need to keep bearing in mind is what's possible under the existing zoning versus what's possible under the Form-Based Code. In some ways, you could end up with something that looked and worked a lot worse under the existing zoning that might even be by right. So we're trying, part of the intent here is to make the Village Center work better no matter what happens.
Good. Yes.
I brought some drawings because there were a lot of questions last meeting about, oh, sorry, Laura Fitch on Pulpit Hill Road representing the Puffer Garnier family. A number of questions came up at the last meeting about why include their properties and were they being secretive and getting extra access to the planning department and stuff. So we weren't being secretive. We were actually just trying to figure out the zoning ourselves and asking a lot of questions and, and working on just, you know, sort of sketch ideas to figure out, you know, what this might mean to them. And always, the Puffers have been very much interested in providing some sort of access to the river and a river-type walk. So I have a sketch. And what's the process here?
If you have enough for all of us, you can hand them out, yes.
And I don't know if you want me to walk you through it now, or if you want to take it home and study it. I don't really know the best process here. I could read through the bullet points and sort of, I don't have a big drawing of it because I've worked at this scale, not at a big, huge scale. I guess one of the things I could say, well, the first page on the handout is just kind of a lot of what we've heard by participating in the charrette, coming to meetings, and hearing people. And so it's reflecting back that we've been listening and thinking about how the development might address some of the things that people asked for, which included things like services and such and river access. And then the top of the backside of that front page, and maybe I could just read the first two paragraphs.
Sure.
There are two overarching themes to the overall concept. And I just want to reiterate, this is a concept, we've tried a gazillion concepts, and this is the first concept that we've tried using form-based zone, now that we sort of understand what it means in terms of the big house, little house, back house, barn. So the first concept is a river walk. The concept is to restore some of the river resource area. So not only is there a floodplain zone there, there's a state law that has to do with river resource, and they want to have, you know, as control runoff and increase habitat and stuff like that. And so there's the opportunity in any development of those properties to actually improve the river resource. "To a more pristine state, increase habitat, reduce runoff, and create pedestrian bike connections along the river. Consider how development can benefit from river views and how residents might enjoy the river while dining, shopping, strolling, and/or biking." And the other overarching concept is pocket neighborhoods. And I don't know how familiar you are with this book by Ross Chapin about pocket neighborhoods, but it's all about small-scale housing, which is sort of shared common spaces. And I think it's a beautiful concept. And, and the other thing that's sort of like a pocket neighborhood is senior cohousing. So there are two cohousing communities in the area, and one that's designed specifically for seniors, I think is very appropriate for North Amherst Village Center. So pocket neighborhoods. This concept is create village-scale housing within mixed-use context along the lines of the beautiful Ross Chapin book, Pocket Neighborhoods, blah, blah, blah. These pockets would have small homes clustered in bigger buildings to match the new Form-Based Code. The houses would surround a shared green space with all the parking screened to the back. There is additional opportunity for each of these pockets to have some shared garden space as well as a garden and bike shed. These clusters should be considered with a view to serving young professionals, families, seniors, and business owners. One option envisioned is for a potentially larger cluster at 65 Sunderland, which is where apartments could actually happen, that would include a senior housing or senior cohousing cluster with a common house and elevator access, that kind of thing. So it would be great for accessible housing. And so then it talks a little bit more about how each of the five parcels they have might play themselves out under this, these two concepts.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have a question for Mr. Tucker. In terms of residential uses, I understand the form-based aspects of, of trying to extend the existing big house, little house, back house, barn type structure. And clearly, the plan that Ms. Fitch just showed us is attempting to respond to that. I guess my question is her use. How would that type of building be classified in our use chart? Would that be considered an apartment?
It would depend on what it was occupied by. And it would depend on the, on whether or not, for instance, a townhouse is defined as being a unit that's on more than one floor up and down with its own separate outdoor entrance, as opposed to, apartments generally have interior, shared accessways.
Mm-hmm.
So if this was a townhouse, that would be, the RVC zoning, that would be eminently doable.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Even if it's a townhouse with, like, six entrances, or I, I guess I'm having a hard time getting, understanding the density here of, you know, from this. Do you want me to answer some questions for a while, or?
If, if you could just quickly let us know what, what type of
The density, well, the type
How many units you would be contemplating?
The building types would have to be townhouses for the first 100 feet. So along Montague Road, those are townhouses. They're just clustered together in, you know, and, and they're perpendicular road, which is also part of the form. In the case of 65 Montague, the one up against Mill River Recreation Area, the grade drops off a lot there, so the back could allow for parking underneath the units.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why it's sort of closed off on the backside. But townhouses, and the density may be 10 to 12 units per little pocket neighborhood, not really, haven't done the calculations, really.
Which is frankly, the average under existing RVC zoning and, and a number of other districts as well. That's sort of the average.
What about the ice cream parlor? Because that doesn't seem, I mean, that's right across from where Pat Holland and Bob Winnie live. That seems...
Well, actually, between, right across from where we've shown a little bit of potential mixed-use or business is an, what I've always seen as an empty parking lot. The Mill River Recreation Area has a big parking lot that swings around there.
Yep.
And then, and then the house itself, her house, is actually, that, that lot is quite deep. So actually, her house isn't even on the plan, I don't think, because it's set back quite a bit.
If, if that property was owned Village Center residents, which is what is the most recent discussion, as opposed to NAVC, you could have the ice cream parlor, it would need to be part of the existing building. You'd need to have, be a mixed-use, where you had that as well as residences in the same building, rather than a standalone. But that...
Is that currently zoned as residential commercial?
It's currently zoned neighborhood residence, which is pretty much strictly residential. It allows for some home occupations and home offices and things like that, including the kind that get people coming to the, to the house, but not, not retail.
I'm sorry, what are we talking about with the ice cream parlor? I'm not sure.
There is a proposal here on, I believe, G.
It's G.
Oh, this is part of the proposed sketch from Ms. Fitch?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It could as easily be down somewhere else.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be there.
Okay. Ms. Greenbaum, can I ask you to use the mic, please?
I have a question and a comment. And the question is, what would happen under Ms. Fitch's plan to the historic houses, or the houses at least that are existing, some of them are kind of cute Victorian gingerbread houses, what, what would happen to those houses under her plan to rebuild? That's one question. And the other question I'd like to bring up is the whole issue, there's no definition in Article 12 for apartments. There is a definition for townhouses. And townhouses, doesn't say anything about this. All it says is it needs to have an exterior door. Now, we discovered from a case this, we had this year that got to be quite controversial, that apartments were originally proposed, and then they looked at all the regulations that were required under apartments. They withdrew that application and came back with townhouses because there's no regulations at all for townhouses. And I noticed, I'm not going to discuss that now, but I think that you need to look at that definition of townhouses because it's been interpreted differently from what Mr. Tucker just said. He's right. One conventionally thinks of a townhouse as, as a first floor and a second floor, with each unit being a dwelling. How it's been interpreted in Amity Place and at this, this thing that we approved for High Street is that it can be two dwelling units on top of each other, providing there's an outside staircase going to the second floor. So I think that that's one place that you may want to look at the bylaw and fix it up.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it, and it, it impacts quite heavily on the NAVC because there are different regs in the NAVC, which Louis will talk about, I think, that, that have to do with density with regard to townhouses and, and with regard to apartments. It's different. But I really want to know what's going to happen to the existing houses.
So I guess I'd leave it to Ms. Fitch to respond to the details, but it looks like the original, the current, the, the current houses don't appear to be part of the plan. Is that correct?
Um, the, the, as you cross the river going north, the first house on the left, which is her grandfather's house, would stay.
That's the unlabeled H?
D.
It's labeled as D.
Okay.
And then, then comes C, and that first historic, that big historic home there with the kind of the gingerbread-y gable.
Yes.
The front of that would stay in this case. The barns, according to Barbara, aren't in great shape. I haven't done, we haven't done a, you know, detailed look at whether the, it's appropriate to keep those buildings for the long term, but the front there is shown as staying. And the next one up in this sketch is shown as replaced. In terms of her little home that's just south of the entrance to the park, the recreation area, Barbara has told me that she's interested in having it moved to another property, and they have a, a property on Puffer Circle or something like that. So that's her current interest right now, but I can't really speak for her.
Thank you.
So the majority of the historic structures, at least in this current concept sketch, would remain. One, one would go, go somewhere.
Yeah, and the cinder block barn, not barn, but garage down on Sunderland Road would go.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone would miss that.
The only thing historic about that was the Buffalo Springfield steamroller that used to be housed inside of that.
So in terms of the question about apartments and townhouses that Ms. Greenbaum had said, we do have a bunch of proposed new definitions going in as part of this, and we could certainly attempt to...
We do, and we could add, we could add that to it. That, I agree with Ms. Greenbaum on that, not so much on the specifics, but the fact that we do need to address that definition anyway. So...
And if I'm not mistaken, that the current draft, we had earlier had a discussion about whether those definitions would go in just under the form-based portion of this, or whether they'd be added to Article 12. And I think they're currently structured to go into Article 12 and apply generally, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm James Steinberg, 115 Montague Road. I just would like to have a little transparency as to how Ms. Fitch was contracted and given the green light to go ahead and design this. In other words, in order for Ms. Garnier to hatch this idea, to have, you know, a mini Puffin Village right next door to me, there had to be some communication with the subcommittee as to whether this would be possible. And I'm just wondering how, how did this come about, you know, after you and the Cecil Group heard from the neighbors about what they wanted? According to Mr. Tucker, you also heard from some people who were open to development like this on Montague Road. And of course, I didn't hear from those people, but I'm sure you did.
Sir?
How many people? What kinds of people besides Ms. Jones and Ms. Garnier, other than the people who own these properties and of course would like to develop them and make some money on them? Who else was in favor of this kind of thing?
I, I can categorically state that the subcommittee as a whole, and then certainly I personally, have never, I've never seen this before. I've never spoken to them. We have had no communication or contact with them outside of the public forums that we've had here.
Okay, so she and Ms. Fitch got together on their own to design this in the hopes that you could greenlight it for them?
I could not tell you anything about the relationship between Ms. Fitch and
All right, fine.
the Puffer Garniers. I, I know nothing about that.
But what about the zoning? How did that change from, the last time I saw that map, I know, I know it's not just the map. I know that. You've, you've made that clear. And I will look at that stack of papers so that I understand it better. However, I just wonder, how did you arrive at that? How does that happen?
So the map that is up on the wall behind us is the one that was proposed by the consultant that we hired, the Cecil Group, who conducted a public process. And, and you know, you've been participating in it also.
Yes.
As have, as has Ms. Fitch from the beginning, as has Barbara Puffer and, and other people. They were all at the public session that we held back in May, the very first one.
Mm-hmm.
And, and a variety of people made a variety of views known at that session.
But that was not the way it looked. I have pictures of the map that he drew. It was all residential.
Sure, sure. We, we were sketching out a bunch of stuff at that session. And, and this version that, that was presented to us is the final version that incorporates all the feedback that was discussed at that session and at other sessions since then. So, so I think it's, it's not correct to, to look at any given thing that was drawn on a piece of paper at that session on May 24th, or, or whatever the date was, and state that that was the, the final vision. That was just, that was an open, working, public session where all kinds of people were drawing all kinds of things that they, they felt represented their views, so.
Paula, would you like to?
They actually made a presentation at the end of the entire day
Mm-hmm.
where they tried to synthesize everything that had been discussed. And they drew that map, not us. It wasn't, it wasn't individuals, but it was a very clear mandate that Montague be residential. It was on this list of points.
Mm-hmm.
So you said that, you know, have they, you said there was that session, there may have been other sessions. I don't know what other sessions there were. We're, we're just kind of wondering how they made the leap from what we were left with, which was that there was a, a clear mandate for a residential Montague Road, to all of a sudden seeing practically 50% of the houses on Montague Road being given over to a commercial use. seeing practically 50% of the houses on Montague Road being given over to a commercial use and a dense use.
So, okay, so one thing I want to avoid, characterizing NAVC as a commercial use because that has really specific connotations in our zoning, and it's not a question of residential versus commercial. It's a question of a really tightly controlled village-centered zoning. So, but that's a semantic issue. I guess I just don't agree with the characterization of having come out of that meeting in May with a mandate for nothing can happen that's not residential on Montague Road. I mean, I know for sure, I was at that meeting, I certainly heard discussion of going up to the Coles property at 134. That was an item that was discussed that day. And there was also discussion about the Mill Building right along the river there and the potential for uses there that, as Mr. Tucker stated earlier tonight, would respond to the presence of the river there and help draw people in and use that resource better. That was talked about that day. And so what they sketched out at the end of the day, I mean, I didn't snap a photograph of it, but I don't think that we should think of that as set in stone or representing the final version of this. Those were items that were presented during the discussion that day, and that has informed the work that they've done going forward. So that's my view of the process that got us here. I guess it's more important to focus on where we are now. So we're having a discussion right now about what to do with the map that they've given us. And so what we're talking about here now is making fairly substantial changes to that map from the exact properties that you're talking about. So I think that a more productive way to address this would be to, for all of us to talk about whether or not we're happy with the zoning that we're talking here tonight, which is not the same as what's in the map that Steve gave us.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Greenbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Louis Greenbaum, Precinct 1. The following are a few brief and random observations upon having read the Cecil Report. And what I hope to be able to accomplish is merely to suggest to you some things that might profit from further discussion and certainly for consideration. Some of these, I think, perhaps have already come to the attention of the subcommittee. The first of these that struck me, and have struck people as a matter of fact, since the time we discussed this at the charrette, because, well, as I recall from my notes, that the feeling of the group about not permitting anything but residential housing and continuing legacy of what Montague Road has been for a very, very long time, that the second thing was traffic. And of course, the road system. What we have in the very center of the village, as I'm sure you all realize, is a network of five converging roads, which certainly have to be looked at, and some people might even insist be redesigned for safety and improved traffic patterns. The question, of course, is whether this ought to be done before the zoning is planned and acted upon, in order really to determine by the flow of what exists and how this interacts in the general proposed area of changed zoning, how that will impact on the nature of the recommendations that finally come down. Drivers need to be able to exit from Montague Road without danger of being hit by drivers arriving from North Pleasant Street, and drivers heading south from Sunderland Road who can't be seen until one pulls out in front of the northbound cars. A second idea, which was launched and stated very, very carefully by Steve Cecil and his colleagues, are the uses and dimensions of what they concede are both intense and dense patterns that exist and have to be addressed. NAVC mandates what they call moderate to high-density residential development on the Montague Road, along with all the current allowed uses in the existing commercial zone on Coles and Sunderland Roads. The current zoning allows, that is not NAVC, but the current zoning in Amherst allows single-family homes to be built on 20,000 square foot lots and duplexes on 26,000 square feet. NAVC does not allow for single and two-family homes at all on Montague Road. Townhouses will be allowed by right in the NAVC proposals with 10 dwelling units per acre north of the Mill River. NAVC allows apartments now with special permit with a density of 26 dwelling units per acre, where none, of course, are allowed at all in RN. The allowed density is 12,000 square feet for the first unit and 1,250 for each additional unit, with 70% building coverage and 95% lot coverage. No other zoning district in town allows for this kind of density. In case some of you may have read the Gazette for today, for Wednesday, there was a report on a multifamily development in East Hampton that was denied by the planning board of that town as too dense. And what they turned down was 37 units on 4.3 acres. Article 12 defines a multifamily building as a townhouse when each unit has an exterior door. Hilda Greenbaum made that designation rather plain. If there's anything that characterizes a townhouse from an apartment, it's that a townhouse has a front door, which leads to an exterior front door. And what the other differences are, I'm sure I couldn't tell you. Article 12 gives no definition of apartment, but many regulations for the development in their Use Table III, which regulations do not apply to townhouses. All of the uses that are currently allowed in the business village center and the commercial zone will continue in the NAVC, in things as diverse as commercial poultry and livestock, raising pets, hotels, motels, inns, congregate housing, lodging and boarding houses, retail stores, restaurants, bars, repair shops, professional offices, banks, gasoline stations, automobile repair, warehousing indoors and out, and fuel storage tanks. Now imagine, this is envisaged on Montague Road in a arterial way, incidentally, that was designed and built before the town of Amherst was incorporated.
Mr. Greenbaum, if I could just interrupt for a moment to make sure that you understand that what we're talking about here and proposing tonight would be to remove the zoning of NAVC along the portions of Montague Road that I believe that you're talking about. So the proposal that's currently under consideration would only have NAVC on Montague Road on the single portion that the Coles property sits on, on the corner with-
That has been changed from the provisions that were noted-
That's correct. That's what we're discussing tonight, yes.
However, NAVC is just west of Longmont. Where you can have west storage.
It is. I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Greenbaum understood that the proposal here would be to re, if I may, Ms. Greenbaum. So I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Greenbaum understood that we were proposing removing the NAVC from that southern portion of Montague Road.
But you had, you wrote all these uses of NAVC that are, excuse me, we spent all day today going through tables here, and what will continue to be allowed, and it looks like, from everything that I can tell, that the current uses in RVC, BBC, commercial are being allowed along with this intense housing in the, it's one house lot back from these things that you're talking about.
Ms. Greenbaum, thank you. Mr. Greenbaum has the mic right now. I interrupted him. I'll give him the opportunity to continue. If you want to speak again, I'll ask that you raise your hand, be recognized, and use the mic. Thank you.
Mr. O'Keefe, I want to thank you very much for making that correction. I stood at something of a disadvantage, which is my own personal liability of a hearing impairment, and so that I couldn't really hear what was going on. And therefore, I'm at my last sentence now and my last idea, with your permission, which I think on the basis of what you very lucidly and very usefully pointed out, may require a slight revision. The proposed, let me just say it anyway, and it's my valedictory, this proposed housing density and intense land use is a conspicuous departure from the expression of the townsfolk of North Amherst at the charrettes last winter and also at the meetings of the planning board up to now, who are opposed to construction of additional multifamily unit dwellings north of Meadow Street. And finally, I wanted to make it clear that we support sustainable businesses, but that will add to the tax base, but with low and tolerable neighborhood impact.
Thank you, Mr. Greenbaum. Mr. Tucker, you had your hand up for a while.
I was going to suggest that unless there are other comments about the, this specific portion of one section of one of the maps, you might want to proceed to discussion of the rest of the zoning map boundaries, and I would like, before you have turned into pumpkins in a half an hour, if you can, to have some discussion about the dimensional table and the uses. There's a list, one of the documents on your, on the table was a list of issues that have already been identified concerning the zoning, and some of those speak to use chart questions. But first, I would ask if there were other questions about the boundaries of the North Amherst rezoning.
So I'll turn to my colleagues here. I personally don't have any other issues with the boundaries in North Amherst. Rob?
I'm just curious why the, not that anyone here knows, the answer, but I'm just curious why the dotted lines form overlay does not extend to the end of Meadow Street, and why it leaves out that little triangle on the north side of Pine Street.
Sorry, what was the triangle you referred to, Rob?
Right underneath the Mill River Corner.
Chris is right. The current form-based overlay extends to the end of the RVC district along the north side of Meadow Street. It goes somewhat further to the east along Pine Street, and it's basically looping around, there's a long driveway that's being used as the boundary on the south side of Pine Street, and it's looping around a house and connecting to the backside of Riverside Apartments. There's a very steep drop-off there. So there's a judgment call to be made about where do you end what is essentially the Village Center form, and you're wandering out into something that is beyond that. South side, it goes down as far as properties that face both on North Pleasant Street and Fisher Street, and it goes all the way down to the edge of Puffton on the west side. It does not, interestingly, it does not include the back, the large back open areas of three of those large residential properties. Those are in the RVC.
Can I just follow up on that? So why, when the Village Center was created, whenever it was created, why did the RVC not go all the way to the end of Meadow Street? I mean, it's like they just left off three or four houses there.
I think part of it had to do with timidity. And part of it also had to do with the easy walking distance to the absolute center. Because you remember, the part of the original function of the RVC was to allow slightly greater residential density and a very, initially a very slight mix of other than residential uses, the possibility of having an office use on, solely office use on the first floor with residences above, that has since been amended to include mixed uses. You'll note that's been that way for a long time, and we haven't had any in any of those districts on the south side. Which is why I think the proposal to have this be an incremental process makes a great deal of sense.
Okay. Any other questions on the boundaries? All right. Did you have questions specifically related to the map? Yes, ma'am, in front of Ms. Fitch, yes. Yeah. If you pull it towards you, it'll come out.
Like magic. Janet Keller, 120 Pulpit Hill Road. I have a clarifying question to ask about the map here. And I feel like at a total disadvantage, you know, I don't have this grasp of these different, I've studied this a bit, but it, I'm still in the being scared by the map stage. Okay? So, and when I see NAVC extended here to the other side of the Mill River, and here, I get nervous. And so I wonder, and I look at the map over here, and I see what I think is a residential infarming, if I got this correct? So I'm feeling like that's, I can see where you might want to do it for consistency and on, be careful what you say, because I talked about fragmentation in March. But I like this fragmentation. So can you, can you just talk to me a little bit about that, if you would, please?
Sure. And just to, again, clarify, the second here that you pointed to on the map, that little portion along Montague Road, isn't there anymore as per our current proposal. So you pointed to the area along the Mill River to the west, and then you pointed to the area along Montague Road, and that's the portion that we're proposing tonight taking away, just to clarify.
Yes, thank you. It's current Montague.
You're welcome. Mr. Tucker?
Remember that one of the, the zoning only controls some things. There are other things, specifically aspects of the land, that control what's possible, and that a range of potential uses, some of which are not really development, but which are ways in which you can access and enjoy the natural setting. For instance, a mixed use or a mixed pathway, a nature trail or something, are among the things that are controlled by the form controls under the zoning. The area along both sides of the Mill River, west of Sunderland Road here, for the most part, there's a very quick drop-off at the back of the properties that are right along Sunderland Road, and fairly quickly you get into what is the Hundred Year Flood Plain. You have not only the Hundred Year Flood Plain, which actually extends further in this area than some of the other controls, but as Ms. Fitch was mentioning before, you have a 200-foot resource area extending beyond the mean high, annual high water mark that is controlled by yet other state law, as well as wetlands, regulations, and so forth. So in many ways, the land that is up here in sort of the northwest corner around the river protects itself. There are environmental and state regulations, there are local regulations on wetlands and so forth that would prevent uses that are not appropriate there, that would be destructive of any of those natural resources. However, we might, someone might, want to put a nature trail, a mixed bicycle and pedestrian path, whether that was a boardwalk or something else, and that is one of the street types that's in the form-based regulations that would be regulated. So what we're doing is the areas that are immediately adjacent to the Village Center that are areas that would serve the Village Center, that would provide pedestrian connections and so forth, much as what is already protected going upstream because of, by town ownership in that case, is being protected by the NAVC. because of, by town ownership in that case, is being protected by the NAVC zoning in that area. The other thing I'd like to point out, the area that you identified that's in the farmland conservation overlay, that's the Schwartz Farm. The entirety of that farm, with the exception of the area immediately around the buildings, is in agricultural preservation restriction. It requires an act of two-thirds of both houses of the Massachusetts Legislature to take anything out of APR. So that's not going to, that's not going to happen. However, there might be auxiliary uses, farm-related uses, that could occur within the farm that would be perfectly in keeping with the agricultural preservation of it, but would also be commercial, like a U-round farm stand or some other, if you look at all of the kinds of things that farmers are doing up and down the valley and in the hill towns, they are creating more and more and more opportunities to generate income for the farms in all sorts of different ways. So some of those uses might occur in the vicinity of the buildings, the hydroponic greenhouses and so forth on the Schwartz Farm. And when that happens, you want to have the Village Center form controls apply to those as well. So that's why the district goes out that far.
So, Mr. Tucker, just to follow up on that, particularly on the portions along the Mill River, I understand what you just stated with respect to the fact that if one were to build a multi-use path through there, then the regulations in the proposed zoning speak to that and would regulate how it takes place. Can you tell me, though, what's really gained by zoning that portion as NAVC? In other words, my understanding is not, my understanding is that you don't need to be zoned NAVC in order to put in a multi-use path.
That's correct.
So I guess my point is, if the existing zoning remained in place, in particular for that northern finger along the south side of the Mill River, I'm not sure that that would preclude someone from putting in a multi-use path that followed the river.
No, it would not. It would not preclude it. It would simply regulate how it happened. So, such that as you get other paths happening in here, there's consistency in terms of how they're developed, if it's done privately. If it's done by the town, it's going to be the way it would be done. So the answer is that there is only a thin set of functions for this, but it is an attempt to keep it consistent with what's happening in the Village Center, since it is immediately associated with the Village Center.
Okay. In the back, we haven't heard Ms. Lecour yet.
Thank you. Sarah Lecour, resident Precinct 9, but representing W.D. Coles. In light of the earlier conversation and the discussion of the RVC switch, I had a question about, then, the properties north of our 134, but going along Coles Road towards the west, that are RN in this proposal now, and that if there's now sort of an RVC roadside buffer going straight up Montague Road, if that would go into that section or how, whether you've thought about what would happen in that area now as an RN. Seems to me maybe some consistency, or I'm not sure what, if we've thought through that through. That was one question. And then, just discussion of the last piece. One of the things, one of the reasons why planners try not to put two zones on a single property is it makes any kind of activity there problematic. So having it all in one zone, whatever that may be, you can look at your uses and your densities, and you can cluster things, and you can put them in one corner of a property and protect the rest. It's always been problematic that that one parcel is in two different zones, because you have to be doing two different things. Right now, it's commercial and RO, which are very, very different.
Sorry, so which parcel? The main Coles parcel?
No, this one here that she brought up.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I see.
So now, now they're both in the same zone.
Mm-hmm.
So whatever zone it is, having them in the same zone is just good planning, because it just makes everything problematic down the road, which is, I'm assuming, why that they're together. So that, as Jonathan stated, there are a lot of wetlands, there is a riverfront in there, but there are some uplands. And, you know, it's not a question that the uplands that are on that bit hanging off towards 116, we could use whatever densities are allowed. Then we cluster it towards Sunderland Road in a mixed-use building. But if they're separate zones, we, everybody gets caught up in what's allowed where and what's not, and, you know, anyway, just those two things. Thank you.
Thank you. On your question about the RVC, you know, the intent of RVC is that it sort of surrounds the Village Center in areas in close proximity to it. And so, to me, running up along Montague Road, the further you get from the Village Center, the less it makes sense to have RVC. And Coles Road and Summer Street seem to present a pretty reasonable natural boundary for the end of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Behind Hilda?
Melissa Perro, Precinct 1. And I'm understanding now that the section up Montague Road is, you're considering making that all RVC. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
The understanding of the residents in this area here was that when we asked that Montague Road remain residential, I think people were thinking of RN, not RVC. There's already an enormous increase in density that's going to occur probably on the Coles property. And then to have the increased density that will occur with RVC, which allows probably four times as much or more along Montague Road, is of great concern. When you look at the map, I know we're not supposed to look at maps.
Yes, you are.
We're supposed to understand the whole thing. What I understand from this is that that Pine Street retains that entrance into the core center, and we would like Montague Road to retain that same residential, residential RN aspect coming into the Mill River. Mill River is the dividing line. I'm delighted to hear you say that that forms a natural barrier, if you like, because it does. It also provides a natural connector, and that's what it should do. It's a connection place. And if we're going to have businesses incorporated into some of the buildings up in RVC, going up Montague Road, that's not a good way to connect through. We need families, this is the largest area in the village area of residential homes, of people who live there and raise their families there, although largely intruded upon, I agree, by some students that have gone there, but the houses still retain the potential for being family units. And certainly, the aspect is very important. It's the use of these buildings that is critical to us. And Pine Street seems to have been allowed that privilege. And I would like to see Montague Road, which spoke very clearly, that they too be allowed that privilege. Why not just simply leave them alone and leave the RN as you have on Pine Street? And this is only dated January the 20th, 2010. And that entire strip on both sides of Montague Road is zoned RN. I don't know how the, a special permit or something that the building on the corner of Coles and Montague has, but it can't, on here, it's zoned as residential. So maybe they have a special permit for that, that you intend to grandfather in. But right now, that's all residential, and very nice it is, too. And you take that away, you take away the heart of the village. It's like taking the school away. You know, it just doesn't work anymore after that. I don't care how many businesses and townhouses you put in. You need a core of people who really are concerned about the history and the community, as it works together, an integrated community that relies on being able to walk and bike and safety. This, these traffic issues have not been addressed at all. The density is only making things worse. And I think what is already a very fragile community at this point is going to be something completely, it's just going to be lost. And I think it's a huge shame, because this is, this is such an important part of the history of this community of Amherst, and its connection with the farms is so strong. And I think to let this, this community fall apart because some developers want to come in and you want taxes, we've got to find other ways to do this. It's, it's just such a shame to allow this to happen. It's not an integrated, it's not holistic view of what's going on here. The farms are critical. The open space is critical. The movement not in cars is critical. And that's not what's being focused on. What's being focused on is how many feet and how many units and how much you can put in. And it's tragic. It's simply tragic. And I feel a lot of people would reiterate what I've said, from what I've talked, talked to many people in the area. They want this to stay a community first and foremost. Putting in pocket communities does not strengthen the community. I'd like to point out that there is a south of the river to be developed, too, in dire need of help, south of the river. But this hasn't been talked about at all. But it's in a devastating state. It's causing difficulties with developing anything, because that is the core, that is the center, that is where the civic buildings are, that is what should be developed, that can be intensified, densified. And we'd be happy with that. We would love it. We would love that part to be increased in its density and the traffic to be taken care of at the same time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please. I'd like to try to maintain a professional atmosphere here, please. Thank you, Ms. Perro.
I'm sorry to be, a bit delusional.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. And everybody here, you know, everybody who's connected with the process, we all feel strongly about what's going on. I understand the fact that the people that live there feel very strongly about it. The people that have interests there feel strongly. So that's fine. I'd like to agree with almost everything that you said in terms of what the goals are and what the desires of the community are. We're working to try to strengthen the neighborhood also. I guess the part where I disagree is you kept characterizing what we're trying to do as tearing apart the neighborhood or throwing away the community. And that's not at all the way that we're trying to approach this, obviously. I mean, we don't go into it with that intent. But the way that our zoning is structured, you know, you talk about looking at the density and the feet and measurements and stuff, that's what we have to look at. I mean, that's what zoning does. It's how it works. So those are the tools that are available to us. But in terms of RVC specifically, RVC is designed to be a residential zone that surrounds a, if I may, a Village Center is designed to be a concentrated area where you have people, you know, living and working in close proximity all around a central area. So we have a business district, BBC, that in most Village Centers functions as the Village Center core. The general intent is that surrounded by an RVC area that does have higher density than the outlying residential areas. And that's not an accident. That's by design. A Village Center, any center, really can only function if you've got enough people there to support the things that are happening in the Village Center. That's how centers work. So that processes by design. That's what we try to do. And extending the, putting RVC in this area is a natural extension and is the way that we zone. So, so no, we haven't looked at Pine Street specifically. But as we discussed earlier, there is RVC zoning along Meadow Street and along the northern portions of North Pleasant Street.
There is.
So Jonathan, can you show us where the Village Center is on Pine Street?
Village Center, excuse me, the RVC district goes out to Harris Street and then jumps over. So these properties in this area are included in the RVC district. Similarly, the RVC district goes down as far as proposed overlay here and as far as the proposed overlay on Meadow Street.
So I see two properties on Pine Street, on South, maybe three, I'm not sure. On those, Pine Street, is there any others?
Chris?
I just wanted to point out that the difference in density between RN and RVC is actually fairly mild. RN requires 20,000 square feet for a single unit, for the first unit, and 6,000 for each additional unit. And RVC requires 15,000 feet for the first unit and 4,000 square feet for the, each additional unit. So the difference between RN and RVC is actually not very great. If you jump to RG, then the difference becomes quite a bit greater. But going to RVC, the density will not be substantial.
Certainly not a factor of four, as was stated at some point. Okay. All right. Ms. Greenbaum, quickly, we do have to wrap this up fairly soon, because there's another meeting in this room afterwards. And can you use the mic to make sure that people can hear you? Thank you.
I will just say that I was kind of, say that I did not think RVC was appropriate for north of the Mill River, but the density, hearing the density there does help. But the difference between RN and RVC is that they can put apartments and townhouses there. And I think that we really expressed an opinion that we did not want multifamily housing north. The other thing is, looking at the use table, and I spent about four hours today looking at the use table very carefully, I think you guys need to look at it also, because some of the uses that are allowed in NAVC are really too intense. That if we're going to give NAVC to the properties on Sunderland Road and Coles Road, and you'll know which property I'm talking about, then we got to get rid of some of the commercial uses north of the Mill River. We don't want oil storage tanks. We have automobile maintenance things on Sunderland Road and south of the Mill River and on the Mill River. Let them be grandfathered in, maybe that's fine, but I don't want them, I don't think it's likely that we'll have them replicated, but you may want to take a look at that. And when you think in terms, even if you're in, you decide when you have the whole vote of the planning board and have the public hearing, that you want to change it to RVC, think in terms of a buffer zone between the uses on Montague Road and the uses, and I don't know what the depth is, farther north on Montague Road. We have 400 feet of residential zoning before the PRP as a buffer to the uses on Sunderland Road. So you may want to, I don't know how you're going to deal with 134 Montague Road, but it would be nice if that house could be lopped off, everything on Montague Road lopped off from the rest of that 14-acre parcel, but I don't know. If there could be a way of buffering, the kinds of uses in the NAVC north of the Mill River from what happens on Sunderland Road, I would love to support that.
Okay, thank you. On the uses, as Mr. Tucker pointed out earlier and was trying to convince us to move along and turn our attention to the uses, we have only a finite amount of time and energy to spend. So we've been spending it on the issues here, but we do intend to look at that. We haven't done that yet, and we will be looking at that. So thank you for your comments.
It's very difficult, slug and throw, and you have to keep reading it over and over. What does this say? And how does it look on the ground? And I would love it if you guys would come and show us some places where they have done this on the ground. On this, I've seen pictures of Lowell, but that was a downtown. It's not North Amherst. And I just don't know how they've used it in Waymouth, whether it's part of their historic district or not. I looked online trying to find it. If some of you guys could come up with it, it would really help town meeting understand what we're trying to do here.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That's going to be it for public comment this evening. Thank you all for your comments. I think it was a productive session, and we do, we all, thank you. We always appreciate hearing feedback. Okay. I've lost my agenda. Do we have anything else of urgency, Mr. Tucker?
Let me just ask, do you want to meet on the 28th as well as the 21st, while you're at it?
Do we want to, or do we need to?
Well, yeah.
Those are two different questions.
Are you willing to? Do you think that there is a need? One of the issues that Bruce wanted to, brought up this evening was to talk about how far along this is and
Excuse me, folks. We need to wrap up our meeting, so if you could just take your conversations out into the hall, that would be helpful. Thank you. Quickly, yes?
On your last one, it said the North Amherst public hearing was October 15th, but there was a question mark.
Has it been definitively scheduled, the public hearing? There's still a question mark next to it, is the answer. You're welcome.
We do need to advertise those fairly quickly, and we need to determine how to format them, whether we want to include one of the Village Centers in with the fundamental form-based regulations, whether we want to do it all at once, to include the Village Center zoning along with the categories of the bylaw and along with the categories of the bylaw, and as Bruce was asking earlier, some consideration about how far along this is and whether it makes sense to bring it to the fall town meeting, or whether we should consider a special town meeting in January or February or something like that, to give us both time to finally get to actually looking at it, where we're not taking public comment, and also to develop the outreach that will help people understand this. I mean, today, one of the, I tried to get started on that, to the extent I'm talking about it. It's not just these maps. These regulations add layers here and there, and you need to understand those layers in order to understand what this does. The map is not going to tell you all by itself, because it can change. So, first, do you want to meet on the 28th?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Then I will put these issues on the agenda for your meeting on the 21st. We do, we will need to get the ad out before then. Are there any thoughts about how we should format this in terms of the public hearing? And for that matter, the warrant.
Bruce?
I do think, I'm just wondering if it will be ready. I am concerned about it. And also, to have both Atkins Corners and North Amherst together at this point, well, tonight, for instance, we didn't even talk about Atkins. And to have them both together and to be, it feels like we're rushing. And then if that were to be defeated, both neighborhoods, then we would have to start all over. I'm wondering if either to request a special town meeting for both, or to proceed perhaps with Atkins and hold off on North Amherst for future time. Maybe, again, a special meeting or in the spring. Because it seems like that's more problematic than Atkins at this point.
Allow me to say, just to inform that discussion, that as a result of conversations that happened earlier this week, the Cecil Group is considering making alterations in the street types and some of the other, tinkering some with the regulations as they apply to Atkins. The principal street type analysis, building type analysis, was the result of looking at North Amherst and then seeing if it applies, where their thought is that Atkins is very markedly different as a physical setting and culturally and historically, and they wanted to make some slight variations there, so.
I think that's all the more reason then to consider asking for a special town meeting. I mean, these are key elements of the master plan, and it doesn't seem to me like there's enough time to really explain all this, to make all the refinements, and to have it clearly understood by people. The worst thing would be for people to come to town meeting and be somehow fearful of this and then just vote against it because they don't fully understand it, they haven't had time to digest it.
Chris?
I was just going to say that I've noticed a marked evolution in people's thoughts about this. Instead of being very fearful and very, you know, feeling like, no, they're committing time, they're trying to understand it. So I think Bruce's idea is a good idea.
I would actually, just for your consideration, offer the possibility that you aim it at the fall, but that you allow for and state, as I am now stating to the mic, the possibility that it would be dismissed, or a motion to dismiss would be forthcoming at the November town meeting in favor of something happening in January or February, so that this conversation can continue at this level of engagement. Because if we suddenly say, well, we're not going to, everyone's going to relax and go away. We don't want them to relax and go away. We want them just as perturbed as they are and engaged as they are.
Rob, go ahead.
I totally agree with that suggestion. However, I wanted to know if it's possible to divide North and South Amherst. How would we do that?
I was wondering about that, too.
You would have to make a generalized motion. Trying to pull it apart, specific by specific, would be a document nearly as big as the whole document, because you'd be replicating things. You would have to have a very carefully worded general statement that said, you know, I'd like to remove all reference to North Amherst and any.
That would just be really difficult.
It would be, it would be. You'd have to sit down and figure it out. We would want to, too. We want to figure it out in advance, so that we would have language that worked, rather than having people try and group Goldberg it at the last minute on the floor.
So there's several questions here that are intertwined. One is the question Rob just raised of separating, maybe trying to do part of it for fall, postponing part of it until later. I think that that's not a good idea. I think that that would probably cause more problems than it would solve, and it would just confuse people and not be productive, I think. So one of the options is obviously go ahead to fall and just go for it and try to see if we can be ready in time and have enough time to educate people. One of the options would be to pull the plug entirely for fall, which I don't think would be a good idea either. I do like what Jonathan just described also, which to me sounds like continuing to work on this. And if we're lucky enough to make substantial progress and we're ready for fall and everybody is ready to understand it and vote for it, then that will be great, and otherwise, we'll not go forward with it. So if we do that, then the questions are special town meeting in the winter or wait till the spring. Special town meetings, to me, are problematic. They, people, I think, don't like generally being called upon to assemble. You've got timing issues with winter holidays and things like that, if you're talking about January. There are a bunch of factors there that make special town meetings more problematic. But it also moves the process along faster as well, so.
It also, if I may, allows for a less divided focus. If this and maybe some housekeeping detail or other are the only articles on that warrant, then everyone who has an interest in this will show up at the right time, rather than having people getting exhausted at the end of, you know, a couple weeks of town meeting and getting odd.
We can vote to have a date certain, though, as part of the regular 17 weeks of town meeting.
Even if it happened during the fall or the spring, yes?
If you are, think that you're ready at fall town meeting, I mean, it's a very good point.
Make a procedural motion.
To have a time when people know to be there. I'm sure that the select board could accommodate that. And we have, I mean, it's clearly, it's something that's done, and I think it'd be very valuable. So just have that in your toolbox as well.
Thank you. I want to point out, I forgot to mention earlier, actually last week, to welcome Mr. Hayden here, Diana Stein, who's been functioning as our, functioning very ably as our select board liaison, excuse me, has elected to move on to bigger and better liaison assignments on the select board and stuck Aaron with the responsibility of sitting through all our meetings. So thank you, Aaron, and welcome. Bruce?
Yeah, if I could just reiterate what Jonathan just said, I think having a special town meeting and having the only focus being Atkins Corners and North Amherst, it would make people's attention more focused, and I think it would help with people feeling exhausted, just wanting to get through it quickly, whatever. I would agree with that.
So I guess I would reiterate my desire for us to keep moving full speed on it, to the extent of scheduling public hearings, too, if we can have a public hearing and talk to people about it and continue further that educational process. I think the more people hear about this, the better, because clearly, there's a lot of work to be done. But I mean, I agree with you guys also, that the last thing you want to do is come before town meeting with something that feels like it's rushed and it's not fully ready, so. Okay. So we're in agreement, then, that for the time being, we're continuing to work on this. Things fall into place for fall, then so be it.
Can I ask a question? In terms of the warrant, how much do you need to make the public hearings coincide with what you are going to put on the warrant? Do they have to be pretty much the same?
I think what you would do is write the legal ad as if it was for the whole thing, and just with an emphasis for the first one on one village center and an emphasis on the second one, so that in some ways, they might end up being sort of a continuous public hearing.
So I guess what I was wondering is, could you just announce the public hearing is going to be open on the whole thing on the 5th, and then continue it as long as you need to continue it?
Yeah.
Rather than having two specific public hearings?
You could, and you could announce that, the ad could announce that the hearing was going to occur on two dates.
Yes.
And could indicate that there was going to be an emphasis at the first meeting on one center and an emphasis the second meeting on another.
So there's two questions there, what the ad needs to say and how we advertise and publicize it. So the ad needs to specifically say that the public hearing is going to be on such and such a day. It doesn't have to speak to when it will be continued or how long it's going to last or anything like that.
I think if you, actually, I think if you want to allow for the educative, not enough coffee lasting long enough here.
Ethnological.
Right, yeah, exactly. Recognitive? No, anyway, where was I? I think there's an advantage to naming both dates, so that people know to come on that date.
That's logistical.
Doing it, yes. When did you say Diana was going to be back? Never mind.
Do we need, may I ask a question? Do we need to advertise it twice, then, if we're going to have?
No, I think you'd advertise it once and you would indicate both dates on that advertisement. But we're going to, that's our technical area.
Technical thing, yeah.
In terms of the educational part, I want to talk to Steve Cecil about seeing if there isn't either verbal or very simple graphic, which will create more confusion, way to describe this layering that I discussed. Because I think, for instance, I think a very great deal of the confusion on the part of those who thought that the result of the design workshop was that Montague Road was only ever going to be residential, was the fact that the consultants were indicating that the form in that corridor was rural residential, which meant it was referring to the physical result of development or change and not necessarily to the uses. And I think people wanted it to be that, and so they believed that, and, you know, will continue to assert that that was the intent. But I think it was a broader intent than that.
Sure, but I also think that the people with concerns are just as concerned, or perhaps more concerned with the use as they are with the form.
Absolutely. I mean, I think there was a confusion there. It was the use they were concerned about.
Right, and so they understood Steve to have been talking about the use, when in fact, he was talking about the form?
Right.
Okay.
Additionally, we need to start thinking about, we have been thinking about outreach with zoning board of appeals, one of whose members was here tonight is interested in getting a presentation on this. We should probably be doing some to others, Town Commercial Relations Committee, any number of those town boards and committees with jurisdiction, Public Judiciary Committee, people with jurisdiction over what happens in village centers. And we are finding out their calendars, so we'll be able to tell you about that.
Go ahead, Rob.
A while back, there was mention of Steve Cecil doing a presentation for the state in this area.
Yeah, the schedule on that is apparently, is being organized by the state. It was, it's a workshop on form-based code out of the Department of Community and Housing Development, and they're going to hold it here, but they're not sure about the date yet. Or unsure they are, the further out the date gets. I've been pressing to, let's do it before town meeting if we can, partly because it could then be taped and broadcast on ACTV.
The issue that Hilda brought up tonight about apartment definitions, so everybody kind of nodding their heads at that as being reasonable, that strikes me as something that we can sort of do.
Yes.
Ourselves, that's not a Steve issue, probably, right?
Well, they had actually offered a definition of townhouses that's different than the one we have, and we may be able to marry the two.
Cecil Group had a definition of townhouses, but they didn't speak to apartments?
That's correct. I think, you know, it couldn't hurt to have a definition of apartments as well. I'm a little cautious always about, I mean, this thing ends up like a burr, starts collecting other issues as it passes through the bylaw, because the bylaw has so many things that need to be dealt with, and then you try to make a change, and suddenly, oh, that's kind of in the way, I got to fix that.
This is so big, though, and it's already adding, you know, dozens of new definitions.
It'll get lost in the shuffle.
To put that in also, because it does specifically concern apartments and townhouses.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That was fun.
And we meet again next Wednesday.